The whole meeting. It's so nice to see most of you. We have Councilmember Everett joining us via Zoom. And let me just turn it over to our city administrator before I do our roll call. So.
Good evening. Thanks for trying to get back to the new normal. Until we get our funding, get our speakers in place, monitors in place. I want to really congratulate Anita and Gretchen and Matt. They've been working three weeks ago, week ago today, trying to get this laptop back up in here. That one is soaked up. So if somebody is logging into Zoom, they can pick up the room and they can hear you. You can speak where you're at and it picks you up. But we have to speak clearly and we can't be talking over one another. So we can make sure that you have the floor. Allow whoever has the floor the opportunity to say what they're going to say before we move next person. It's the test that we have has been working okay with technology. When you need it the most, it's when it fails. We're hoping that if it gets us through, the mayor has the screen that she can see people that are on. Anita has her screen that sees people that are on. This one is just set up to pick up the dialogue and the picture of the group. So we're going to give it a try tonight and see if it walks us through. I know some of you have brought your laptops. You can use your laptops. Just silence the speakers and the mic. You can see then what's on there, but if it starts echoing back and forth, then we're going to suggest that you from your unit off, and we just have the mayor's and the one up here.
And you know, we hope in the future that that would be a thing.
We're looking for a 70 inch screen. We're looking for, I think Matt and I have reached out to a vision who does our IT here. And we would do the camera on the TV that will pick up the room. We would have the conference speakers where you would have the main speaker where the mayor sits with two that come around around the shoe here so we can pick that information up. We want to have it where it's either Bluetooth or we can connect the laptop. So when Matt is doing the budget process, we can show it on a screen up in there. So we're trying to get some prices, but what we're finding out right now with everything that's happened this past year, there's a lot of things that are not on the shelf. So it's not like it's readily available, but we're trying to make as much effort as we can to try to get something moving. And as soon as we can get all the prices put together, we will come back to you and say, for this amount, we can get this, 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 this.
Thank you very much. Okay, so let me just do roll call. Councilmember Diaz.
Present.
Councilmember Everett.
Present.
Councilmember Jenny sent to notice that she will not be joining us. I don't know if she is joining us via Zoom. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Ozuna. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Present.
And Councilmember Sowers.
Present.
The public comment at this time, the public may address the council on any topic, whether on the agenda or not, except those scheduled for public hearing. Okay, I hear no public comment. And of course, we also have our city attorney joining us here tonight. Sorry I didn't introduce them. Good to see you. We also have our city clerk, our city treasurer joining us here tonight and of course our city administrator. Anyone that is joining us via Zoom, welcome. Thank you for joining us. And we will get started with our agenda, new business, our resolution approving the final plan of Grand Ridge Estates, Phase Four located on Grand Ridge Road and alternative to our city.
Council on Page Four of your packet. We will see the phase four that is before you for approval. And this is the Grand Ridge Estates. This is the same as what's been going in there, stick filled homes. They've gone through and extended the roads, all of the infrastructure, water sewer, all of the utilities that need to go in there. They have all met the city's construction standards. And now that it's complete, the developer does have interested companies that want to buy these lots. And we're recommending to council to approve Phase Four as complete. And I'd like to also recommend that council will consider moving this to tonight's council meeting for formal approval because the current developer that is helping the land would like to come in and pick up the signed plans, take them up to the county, record them. Once he records them, then there he can entertain a sale on completion and benefit to us to do this is that the sooner some of those lots are sold, the more revenue that comes into our coffers and allows us to fill our reserves or do fund different projects as they come up. So I know we've talked before, but north of Phase One where the canal runs, when do they plan to develop? That is down the road. What's holding that development is the ability to enter into an agreement with Bureau of Reclamation. There's there's an existing canal on the north end of the property that would run through the middle of all of those lots in Phase One. They have identified a 30 foot easement in the street above Jay. So once those documents are approved and they can relocate that that canal, then they can construct those other lots. And from what I'm hearing, it's progressing and it looks like it would be a project. Because working with Sunset Valley Irrigation, they do their own construction. We will not let a contractor move pipes. They will do it. They're booked for this year. So this would be something that would be slated for 2022. As soon as the Bureau of Reclamation approves the the new easement location, then they'll abandon the existing one. Then they get SBA, the contractor, then has to pay SVID for the labor and the pipe and materials. And it was scheduled most during the off season of the irrigation, which would probably be November, December, January timeframe.
Those were through Grand View's.
Yes. No, Pleasant is a 30, 37, no 35 foot street. This is a 40 foot street. Our standards are for a 40 foot street. And that's when I first took over as public works director back in 89, we had the option of a 37 foot street or a 40 foot street. And of course, as a developer, they would all want to do the 37 foot street because it's it's creepy along the whole length that they didn't have to spin. So like we did, council would eliminate that that option and standard street is a 40 foot street for residential local access. Main arterials, those would be 50 foot because you have to accommodate the two lane center, turn lane and parking. So arterials are at a different standard.
So when you say street, that's that doesn't include the
Basic curve.
All right, so.
Tonight, tonight.
We have a motion and a second to move this to tonight's council meeting for approval. And I will do a roll call vote. So we'll start with Councilmember Diaz. Councilmember Everett.
Councilmember Everett votes yes.
Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Ozuna.
Yes.
And Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Sowers.
Yes.
Okay, so we will move this to tonight's council meeting as item. All right. On to item B on your agenda, resolution authorizing the mayor to sign amendment number one to the professional service agreement of the Yakima Valley Conference of Governments for the Shoreline Master Program Plan update.
So in February of last year, council approved the resolution that authorized the mayor to enter into a professional service agreement with the Yakima Valley Conference of Governments to update our Shoreline Master Program Plan. The mayor signed that agreement on March 2nd, 2020. We received an email from the executive director of CAG requesting that the city do an amendment to that service agreement to change the worrying of the dollar amounts in Task Four. It doesn't change the overall amount that they're charging us. It's just kind of a housekeeping item. So if you turn to page 15, that's the original service agreement. And then if you compare that to page 19 of your agenda, so the first one is the review amendments to the chapter RCW on ecology rules. There's 2050 on Task Four, the requesting that be changed to 3040. And then on number five, revising the SMP goals, policy and regulations, the requesting that be changed from $328 to $728. And then on page 16 and 20, we're requesting that under Task Five, number one, provide a draft SMP to city staff for review, changing that from $328 to $428. So as I said, the original contract amount stayed exactly the same. Right.
All right. So are you, when are you proposing this?
This can go to the next regular council meeting.
Any comments or questions?
Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Everett. I'd moved the approval of amendment that we send the approval of amendment number one to the next regular council meeting.
So we have a motion and a second to move this to the next regular council meeting on, when was that council meeting?
April 27.
April 27. Okay, any comments or questions before we go to vote? Okay, no comments or questions. So I'll do a roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Diaz. Councilmember Everett.
Councilmember Everett, yes.
Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Ozuna. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Councilmember Sowers.
Yes.
Okay. Council meeting, moving on to item C, resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an amendment to the agreement between the city of Grandview and Yakima County Development Association with a pass through and use of Washington State Department of Commerce coronavirus.
Thank you. We saw this more as housekeeping because last year during the COVID relief funds that the city was receiving, we had entered into an agreement with YCDA, Yakima County Development Association, to help us with the grants or the businesses to help them offset some of the losses due to the closures and administer some funding. And then three quarters of the way through the project, we received a notification that we had an additional $168,000 to work with and council again decided to just pass those through to the businesses. Because we, we had numerous businesses that have not been able to qualify because we ran out of money. And we just moved forward with YCDA to continue the process. And looking at it afterwards, we should have passed an addendum for the second set of funding for the 168,000. And YCDA is asking us to consider that, pass an addendum, addendum to the agreement. And we, the staff, we truly appreciated what they did for us. We were working with such a short window that the goal was to get the money out to businesses as quick as, as quick as we could. And we really never thought about, we should do a second, second contract that we can clean it up right here by moving a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an amendment to the agreement between the city of Grandview and Yakima County Development Association for the pass through and use of Washington State Department of Commerce coronavirus funds to the next regular council meeting. The money's already come through, gone out. There isn't any exchange of dollars. It's just an amendment to the contract that we have.
Okay, wonderful. All right, so we have a motion and a second to move this to the next regular council meeting. Any further questions or comments? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. So then we'll councilmember Diaz. Councilmember Everett.
Councilmember Everett votes yes.
Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Ozuna. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Councilmember Sowers.
Yes.
All right, motion passed to move this to the next regular council meeting, moving on to item D. Resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a master license agreement between the city of Grandview and Yakima MSA Limited Partnership by United States Cellular, operating company of Yakima for small cell wireless facilities.
And I think we have Kate Johnson on the line. She's with USO.
Yes.
And USO is requesting a master license agreement from the city to install, maintain, operate eight small cell wireless facilities on existing replacement or new utility poles within the public right of way. The seal overview that has, you see on page 27, there's a little kind of antennas that are, that would be attached that would help improve the reception, transmission of airwaves. And we see that as a, again, as a, as a good thing because there's a lot of spots in the entity that could use a stronger signal. So staff is recommending that we move a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a master license agreement between the city of Grandview and Yakima and the state limited partnership, United States Cellular, operating company of Yakima for small cell wireless facilities to the next regular council meeting.
Okay. We do have Katie Johnson. Is there anything you'd like to add before? Kay? I don't know if you can hear us. I hope so.
Yes, yes, I can. We also have Anna Ruzadella, who's actually an attorney with US Cellular. So if you have any questions, either about the project in general, I can probably help you with those. Or if there's questions, you know, about the contract or the nature of the US Cellular involvement, then she's available also on the line. This is just part of US Cellular's push to expand densification of their infrastructure so that, as you said, it can, you know, overall improve the user experience. And that's something highly in demand right now, apparently. So if anyone has any questions, we're happy to help out.
Wonderful. Thank you, Kay and Hannah. Yes, our councilmember Everett has a question.
Yes. I'm pretty stupid about this stuff. Can you explain to me a couple of things? Does it impact in any way broadband? Does it impact in any way 5G?
This actually is not a 5G project. It's still 4G, but it actually lays the groundwork for 5G. So it's kind of a building block for when it moves towards 5G, but this actual installation is not. And yes, it still would impact broadband. Anna, correct me if I'm wrong. This actually has impact on both voice as well as internet, if you will.
Yes.
Yeah.
The next question, if I may ask, the equipment that is going to be installed, is it new equipment or is it equipment that you're moving from another facility into Grandview?
My understanding, and Anna can correct me if I'm wrong, if this is all new equipment, it would be an antenna and radio head for each location, actually tailored specifically to this project.
Exactly. All new equipment.
Yeah. And finally, can I ask for a city attorney, what you negotiated? It said you negotiated, the communication, the letter said you negotiated with Mr. Platt. What were the, what was the issue that you negotiated?
We set out the term of the agreement, the length of the agreement, which is a five year agreement with renewal terms of four additional five year terms. There are specific termination rights, such as specifically, we negotiated that the city may terminate the agreement for specific reasons, such as material default without cure. If US Cellular was found to have, to engage in any fraud or deceit, or, you know, God forbid, we become insolvent or bankrupt, items like that. So that is what Mr. Platt negotiated on behalf of the city.
And this doesn't result in any money coming into the city?
Yes. So there are guidelines that were set by the FCC and those are $270 per node per year, along with one time application fees per detachment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Sowers. How will this impact the customers that are using the service? Are they going to get an increase in their monthly bills?
This is a standard part of US Cellular's commitment to expanding their their offerings in a competitive marketplace, but no, it will not have any direct impact on bills because this is just a natural buildup of their industry, buildup of their, of their capacities.
Any other questions, comments? All right. So we would like to move this to the next regular council meeting, April 27.
Robert, could you speak up a little bit?
Thanks, David.
You have to speak up.
Sorry, yes, his masks are interfering. So he'll repeat that.
I made the motion to move a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a master license agreement between the city of Grandview and Yakima MSA Limited Partnership, United States Cellular Operation, Operating Company of Yakima for small cell wireless facility where regular council meeting consideration.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. If there are no further questions or comments, I'll go to roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Diaz. Councilmember Everett.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Vote yes.
Councilmember Ozuna.
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Councilmember Sowers.
Yes.
Great, motion passed. Thank you very much, ladies. We appreciate you joining us tonight. And we'll move forward to other business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I don't have any other business, but we have 30 minutes. We, if you'd like, we could go into reports and we don't have to do at the end of the council meeting tonight.
Okay.
And well, when it starts, we have a lot of good and exciting things happening in Grandview. We have the development that is moving strong on Grand Ridge. We've issued occupancy permits, so people are starting to move into some of those new homes. The developer that developed the land has completely sold all of the lots and leaving the first phase to new additions on Tri-Cities. So they'll be building all of those homes. The project on Apple Way and West Fifth is moving along. Let's see, 40, 50% complete with the infrastructure. And I know that the developer has a contractor that is wanting to buy all 18 lots there. We have a developer that we have a meeting with next week that is looking to develop north of Grandview, north of the Angela, which would be from the freeway on Wilson Highway south to the Angela there. And there will be similar homes to what what is being constructed right now, the three car garage, this larger, larger medium sized home. So we have some nice developments happening. As far as commercial, I'm sure all you saw the article in the Grandview Herald about McDonald's. It's official now. They picked up their building permit, their water sewer connections. And they're slated for May 3rd to start construction. There's been a lot of work in the, in the progress, but it's, it's, it's coming to reality. Also, on the west side of town, on Upper Euclid Cross from Boots Mark, it's the Howlett property. Been working with Wes Howlett, which is a brother to Ray, took over the property and Wes is a lot more motivated than Ray about selling parcels over there. And in order to do that, he needed to clean up the infrastructure. So I've been working with them for about a year. They redid the, the street surface because it was, it was starting to deteriorate. So last year I gave him a recommendation. He hired Will Luther. They went and did a treatment. He replaced some curb and gutter that was damaged. He replaced a couple of the pumps, check valves, electrical equipment at the lift station. He's paid for three new street lights to be installed. And then he's going to come back to us to accept the infrastructure. And then he's going to come back to us to accept the infrastructure, uh, as a city-owned, uh, west-owned and operate. In the process, he, he sold parcel to a, uh, Grandview resident. And, uh, they're building a coffee shop, uh, similar to the Dutch Brothers coffee shops and, uh, that are around. Uh, they're in construction now. They started, uh, Monday. Uh, they're going to be pouring greens tomorrow. That's what we put, pretty nice little coffee shop. I don't drink coffee, but it's going to be a nice coffee shop. Next to it is, is one that, uh,
Start. You might start if we put him in every corner?
Maybe. The next one is, uh, exciting as well. It's, it's not out or, uh, where I can release who it is yet. Uh, yeah, they popped it off the phone within a day. It is in about three weeks. They'll be able to make the announcement, but it's a 10,600 square foot retail store that'll go right next to that coffee shop. That's, that's going to be exciting. I, I think we're going to be real happy with, when we see that development coming in. And, and then the, the other is, uh, you know, we, we shared at the last council meeting that we had been meeting with, Anita and I had been meeting with, uh, Nolan there. Uh, they, they're coming in to do a, a study on expanding broadband within the community. And, I mean, we had the first meeting. It was just kind of like, oh, I'm so, so, it's kind of just introductions. We have our second meeting and in, in that, in that meeting, um, you know, they brought up about, you know, as we move forward, you know, it might be beneficial to partner up if, if we were going to do a electric vehicle charging station that we would partner with them, where they would also, uh, place a conduit so they could offer free Wi-Fi at the stations. So when you're charging your car, if you want to do some work, it'd be, it'd be a Wi-Fi, uh, opportunity. So I shared with them that I was aware that I, I'm sure that Pacific Power have a grant application for electric charging stations. So I, I volunteered to make calls. So I called Pacific Power. Uh, we have a week, a week to put something together. Uh, Nolan stepped up to the plate and, uh, one of their technicians that helped do the application. And not only did they help do the application, they, they committed, uh, $17,000 for in-kind services towards the project. So we put together a project for about, uh, $300,000 for nine stations throughout the community. Uh, there'll be some two at the high school, two at the college. Uh, there'll be some on, uh, uh, west side of town. Some over by the Rose Gardens, some down here in town. Uh, so, so, uh, Pacific Power, when I talk to them, they, you know, kind of like, wow, that's pretty aggressive, you know, and, uh, but we figured that we could ask for one, we could ask for the ultimate bill out, and if we get two, or we're, one more had been, we would have gotten, uh, Nolan is pretty excited about the, the application and the, their, uh, I think they're going to be a good partner because, uh, if we don't, you know, run on this one, you know, they're also looking at what other funding is available where we can get a charging station bought into town, you know. And at the end of the day, uh, if, if budget time is, is, you know, we would come to council and say, fit charging stations, it'll be $30,000. Nolan steps up and gives us a portion of it. We, we've gotten a partner and we'll get, we'll be on the path to the future because we're going to be needing some of these and, and we're, we're beating the brush, so we're pretty excited about it. Um, one of the things that, uh, I talk about partnerships, how important those are, and we're working on a limited window. I had to call for Dr. Randy and, you know, I said, Randy, you know, I know you just had a meeting when you came to, but I need you to help me. I have this letter I need you to do for me. And he, he kicked it out for me right away. I called the colleagues. I've got Teresa Rich, uh, she's vice president of, uh, maintenance of college. She submitted her letter right back to me, uh, the school district. So everybody that I reached out to recognized that I was working on the short window and we all stepped up to the plate. So that's the, the importance of, when I say how important partnerships are. That's where I, that's when the, the putting, it's, it's the proof is in the pudding because we were able to put it together, get it submitted. Uh, I've been in contact with Pacific Power. They've asked me to call the port and office, get a, an appointment with an estimator. So I, I kind of see that as good news because they, I don't see that they would be sending an estimator to talk to me if I'm going to, if my application isn't looking positive. So I just wanted to share that with, because, uh, I, uh, we've got a lot of things happening right now, and I know that they have to be under wraps and, like, you know, we're not able to share until things are, are, are ready to go, but, uh, if this charging station application comes together, we will be coming back asking you to authorize the mayor to entry into an agreement with Pacific Power to make this happen. Uh, I'll, I'll have Anita tomorrow send that out. Email you. So in, in that email, you'll see the application. You'll see the locations and what the costs are for that project.
So, because the locations are, for the book, as we mentioned.
Yeah, yeah, we will, we will, uh, the Rose Garden is, is one of the locations that we chose as a quick charge. If somebody gets off, we wait, quick charge your car, and then they can move on. Some of the other ones would be the, the kind of the store units, and they can get off their car and maybe go get something to eat. You know, come pick up our, our beautiful town. And so, uh, we're, we're hoping that
There are several, it's like, uh, Washington, uh, Grandview area.
Yeah, so we're, we're trying to, trying to get us there. I just wanted to pass them on.
One, one of the things I'd like to add that, um, you know, I was, uh, I was pretty pleased to, you know, to hear that, you know, that the staff got right on working on this application because, you know, quick turnover around. But, um, you know, this is something that also early on, you know, we had community members already in class A. The city, you know, doing anything about, uh, charging stations. And it's not, you know, it's not a quick, uh, application. I just want to show you guys that I have the application right in front of me, um, that I'm reviewing. You'll get a chance to look at this, but I want you to know that, um, you know, that the staff, uh, is hearing on your requests and, you know, the city, uh, you know, leaders or community requests. But it's, it's a lot of work. And, um, I actually, uh, you know, was talking to Cus the day that we had to, you know, we had to, cutting everything short because he had to make sure that, you know, this made it, uh, made it there. But I just want to mention that. Any other reports before we move? Yes.
I just want to say congratulations on all the work that's going on, especially McDonald's is coming in. I mean, that's, that's pretty awesome. I know there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that happens, uh, the economic development, and it seems like, you know, we're all that. That's what trying to develop, uh, a vision and a mission, but a lot of stuff is going on. So thank you and your staff for taking the leadership and doing all the work behind the scenes. I know it's a lot of work and, but I, I think there are a lot of stuff going on. Thank you and staff. I think it's exciting times, and, you know, we've got to pick up on that momentum and go forward and, you know, McDonald's goes in, probably other ones are going to start locating, you know, and that kind of stuff. So I think we're, we're right, at the right place at the right time, especially when it's recovery, when the pandemic is coming. Who I think are starting to think about, you know, where do they go take their businesses? A lot of stuff is put on hold. So I think you better take advantage of the opportunity, knocking, uh, we can knock it, opportunity is.
And, you know, there's a, if there's a critical time between, you know, being able to, you know, to just share a lot of the things that are happening. There's a lot of, uh, activity happening that the staff is a part of that, you know, we can't come and share, uh, until it's, it's final. But just know that it is, uh, you know, that it is, there's a lot of work, you know, taking place. And so that brings me, if there's, is there any other common reports? Okay, I have, I have a report. Um, one of each?
One of the other.
And each of you should, the president should get a copy of, of these. Did you know that, uh, we recommended naming the norm children or meaning the athlete or after man or children? And, um, I don't know. This is what the sign would look like. And then the second page is between some pillars. And this sign by itself is going to cost about $1,500. And this is aesthetically in tune with the sign that's up for Ralph Scott. You know, we have the brick sign of the archway. We're not going to put an arch on this one. Um, but this one, you know, it's got the pillars. And Cus has shared with me that this is an artistic or, you know, an artist's idea. But, um, they, uh, we have some pavers left from the downtown project. And they were used on site, part of the museum, and we thought it would be a nice to put the bricks, not bricks, but, um, cement. The pavers on top of cement. Oh, not post, but it's
What, what you have to do is you would have to take the cement block
Yeah.
to build your column, and then you could take and, and submit the pavers to that so they would, they would stick.
And, and so instead of having this, that looks like, um, similar to what's at Fruit Smart, we would have what, if our, most of our pillars would look similar to the pavers that are downtown and on the library. And for those of you that were here when we did the downtown revitalization, uh, Norm was the mayor and really into, you know, making sure that the downtown looked really good. So in my opinion, I think using, um, pavers that aren't going to be used, that are just stored, would be smart to do the cement bricks or the cement blocks. Thank you. Not a builder, but, and then cement those papers around it. And so we need We don't have the full cost on that, on the
Yeah, with the, the bricks.
Well, it's going to be the cement. There's no charge for the pavers because we already have them. It will be the, the cement blocks and then the cement and the work that you completed. I, we do not, Cus and I do not have an exact figure of that. But we need to make a decision if we want to, you know, move forward with a sign like this that is going to be aesthetically complimentary to Ralph Scott's, they softball fields. And, you know, would look nice, and it will have a light on it so it can light up at night, like, you know. Um, and I can tell you that
Hey, Jen, Anita, there's no sound coming through.
You as a council member decide which one you would like. Then you would have the direct staff to amend the budget to appropriate those dollars and then we could get it constructed.
We already have a cost for this, right?
Yeah, $1,500 is right here on the bottom.
Yeah, so we do need to cover that one.
Correct, correct.
So I'm just bringing it to you folks so you know this.
Good job.
Part of this, part of this major.
Yeah, don't spend, uh,
They call it credit, don't use it.
No, this is a partnership. It's a partnership.
A big project.
Yeah.
Some get, fires hundred, hundred, some break out. Well, and the bell's already there, so that's something that's under work. Yeah.
Good job, David.
You need to have somebody, uh, probably show to make it happen.
And we have, um, on the other end, we will, uh, Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Good. Okay. Good job over here.
Big one. We're getting all set up over here. We apologize. We lost, uh, the Zoom connection for a while. And, uh,
Internet, internet.
The internet went out, so we will, um, you know, we, we had some time earlier, but I think what, uh, what I'll do is, um, you know, there will be, um, some, I wanted to make some comments in regards to the last meeting that we had. I received a letter from Councilmember Everett, and I will be addressing that, um, to allow time because I'm not sure if, uh, if we'll get an opportunity to address it all now. So what I can do is if there's no other, um, you know, comments, we could adjourn and come back to a regular council meeting and that's it. Any other, uh, questions or comments?
So you're going to address that major?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, because we might not get the opportunity to address it, and then we'll have to pause. So we'll just address it at the, the under. All right, so we'll take, uh, all of that, the motion to adjourn. All right, so we'll take all of their, the motion to adjourn and we. Thank you. All those in favor? Councilmember Everett?
Yes.
All right, wonderful. We'll see you all at seven o'clock.
Actually, I'd like to tell this to say that to go back to Florence. I just wanted to make sure you're here. On the proposals. Here you do. Thank you. I just wanted to point out here something. So we're both going for seventeen three four for ten with per month from customer to seventeen ninety six. Now, I'm hearing that with other cities here, the seventeen, none of those other ones include recycling. That's just garbage. So if you want to add in recycling costs an additional uh. Seven dollars roughly, take it up to twenty four ten. You're doing recycling and garbage and composting, what's your design?
What?
Hello. Where are you?
How are you?
We're busy, it's busy, it's uh.
Yeah, I think they're going to tell them.
I think I've done. Uh, what's that, yeah. I don't know. I didn't think this was eight.
Well, no.
But it's not. I'm just. Yeah. Where. My. Home was. We grew up this. And it's just, they just.
Yeah. Well, it's going to be now. And uh. Is uh. And I'll just say. I know it's going to. Nor it's. We were trying to find that we haven't. Okay. I don't. But. I mean, it's going to happen. For this data, we could always uh be. Uh, on the. It's actually. I've got all the pros and cons of this and all the bads. Yeah, so you're. Also, you still open. Oh, no.
I did. I mean, I had, there was a little bit of time, there was a transition pitch, a little while, so I moved. So I did spend some time while I was still.
Yeah. Well, you know, and uh. Yeah, you know, I would want to talk during the year and stuff and always that. The virus coming out of that. And stuff. What?
I, I think, well, I'm usually there. But with.
Hey, Ken. There you go.
How it lasts. I, yeah, I guess. Exactly. I did not. Not too early.
Yeah, well, you have. But to, you know, give the. You know.
Well, that's, that's the goal. One. I'll. Yeah, that and there's. You were ready was for me to. What I'm seeing. That's a real.
Yeah, we've got cars too. And I need time. How do we. We're sorry. Okay. And then. Put the over even more than things. Try to make sure that. The plan. And I just kind of. Quickly, so. So, yeah, I didn't have. We want to have to. Join us, we're going to be starting here shortly. Hi, gentlemen, how are you? Oh, no, I didn't know. I was on my skinny track. It was nice. Thank you so much for joining us. I'd like to have. You're welcome.
Joe Santos.
Joe.
Joe Santos.
Joe Santos.
Yeah, I'm with the American League of Rangers.
Jesse, thank you. This is. If you agree.
Thank you for your support.
Or anything, okay, I think actually. Bill.
All right. Welcome back, everyone. Welcome to our regular council meeting. And I will. Like to um. You know, just welcome everyone back that joined us ever committed before. I'll get my agenda here, call this meeting in order. And uh, let's, you know, let me do roll call and then we'll do our pledge of allegiance. So let me just uh, start with Councilmember Everett who is joining us uh to resume tonight. Uh, Councilmember Everett?
I'm present.
And we have Councilmember Diaz.
Present.
Councilmember Ozuna.
Present.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Peter.
Councilmember Moore. And Councilmember Souters. Question. Uh, we have a notification from Councilmember Jenny, so we need a motion to uh excuse her from tonight's meeting. All right.
Councilmember Diaz, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve uh, Councilmember Jenny's absence tonight. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Councilmember Everett?
Yes, I said aye.
Okay, so let's uh stand up for the pledge of allegiance. All right. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands. For our nation, under our law. Give this all with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'd like to welcome everyone that is joining us tonight, we assume. Uh, we have our chamber president, Johnny, joining us tonight and a few other people, welcome. We will get started. We have a few presentations tonight, so I will um. Turn it over to our city administrator to introduce our county commissioner, Aladon Mindy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor of Council, Diaz. Good evening. Um, today, it's my honor and pleasure to introduce a good friend of mine, Aladon Ren. Uh, he worked with the Centwood Hospital, he and I uh had the chance to work together. I sat on a compliance committee that he uh brought information to and he was always prepared. That's well, and now he's, he's working for us at the county. He sees our, our representative for our area. So without any further ado, I'd love to introduce Aladon Mindy.
Thank you, welcome.
Well, thank you, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor and thank you, Mr. Ojaga. It would be, yeah. Yeah. You know, this is an interesting position because uh, I know that Norm Childers was your mayor and city councilman for a number of years. And so uh, you know, it feels a little awkward here stepping in issues and, but uh, but nevertheless, it's a privileged, discouraged position. Thank you for the opportunity. I thought I might first start talking about the fact that we are very happy to still be in phase three.
Yeah.
I think there's a lot of disagreement about that. I will tell you, there was a lot of anxiety, not only from us, but I think a lot of businesses, a lot of local officials, you know, up and down the county, as we were looking at some of the numbers last week and wondering what the governor was going to do. Uh, about a week ago, I thought we were probably one of nine counties that would end up being stuck back in phase two. A couple of interesting developments that happened along the way. First of all, uh, Friday sometime, the governor announced that, well, if you met just one of those criteria, you'd allow to stay in phase three. Uh, we were worried about, you know, if we still would be able to qualify, but why, did get a glimmer of hope on Friday because the health district uh sent some reports to us showing that the state had finally told us about the timeframe that they're going to measure by was. And it was March twentieth, April second. Under those criteria, according to the county's numbers, we were over on the case numbers, but we were okay on the hospitalization. Now, the issue became though, uh, as the health district spoke with the Department of Health State uh over the weekend, we found that their numbers were not correct, which is kind of troubling, just the second time in the last couple of months we've had this conversation about the accuracy. But I want to give full, full credit and kudos to the health district because they really stepped up and worked with the Department of Health and made sure that the information that we had was the same information that they received with that. That was amazing. So on one hand, it's, it's good news not to move backwards and how we hope we continue to move forward. And uh, with that, of course, I think you're all aware of the, uh, we had the good fortune to be able to uh have an agreement with the, with FEMA to help with our mass vaccination site at the Sun Dome. And one of the features which is unique because they put this, uh, this kind of mass vaccination site into other areas throughout the country. But we're unique in the fact that we got a mobile component to it. Where we can actually go out and go to different locations throughout the county, including farms and warehouses where we can take it right to the workers. And uh, and help vaccinate right there. This is a neat thing that we had pushed for, the health district had recommended. We're grateful that, that this has been able to be accomplished. So the vaccination uh, you know, the volume continues to uh stay at a strong level. Not everybody that's getting vaccinated in Yakima is from Yakima County, actually. And actually, I hope Seattle, to be honest, it's kind of interesting. It's a very young people, people in their twenties and even their teens are driving from Seattle to get their vaccine. So uh, that's kind of an interesting one to know. That even said, we're, we're happy with progress. Also wanted to take a few minutes, Cus asked me to talk a little bit about what we know about the American Rescue Plan. Or ARPA or AR, depending on, on what it's called. Or. Yeah, for him. Uh, this is what we have learned, it's um. The, our payments to local governments, of course, is part of the, the recent COVID relief bill that was passed by Congress and signed by the president. Uh. The amount that the counties getting allocated is supposed to be about forty nine million dollars by our estimate. But these, these payments to any local entity, whether it's county or city, will become, come in two parts. Uh, one is supposed to be here by May eleventh and the next, the second half of that should come about a year later. Now, uh, the, the number that I've seen, the estimate that I've seen, and maybe you already have this information, but uh supposedly Grandview is supposed to get about two point four million. And again, you get the first half around May eleventh. Now, one difference that I can tell you between the way we would receive the money and the city of Grandview will receive the money is that we will get it directly from the federal government, but you will actually go to the state first. And then the state's going to redistribute it, uh, and distribute it to cities. Um, I don't know, I don't yet have a contact on that, but I, I, uh, most people I spoke to are pretty confident that it wants to begin. It's going to go through the Department of Commerce, just like the first one. So that will be, that will be the route for which it comes. We have learned that there are fewer strings tied to this, this round, a lot more flexibility than that first round that we got through the CARES Act. Um, I can tell you some things uh that were the restrictions and recommendations. First of all, it can't be used to replenish a pension fund. Uh, can't be used for that purpose. It cannot be used to offset or delay a tax increase. So there is, those are two rules. There are also some recommendations and I, I thought I'd actually take the, a couple of minutes and went, go through a uh, a presentation that was given to us by our finance director. So some of the eligible, eligible uses of these funds will include, well, responding to the COVID pandemic, of course, and that's, that's kind of a pretty broad category, really. Uh, covering costs incurred from, from the emergency, it can be used for revenue replaces. So if you lost, the city or the county has lost revenue due to some of the things that happened due to COVID, it, it could be used to replace that. Uh, it can also be used, uh, if you had to dip into revenues, I mean, I'm sorry, reserves. I can be used to replenish some of those reserves, but that's another thing where it could be used. Uh, or any other kind of negative economic impact. It can be used for premium pay for essential workers and even investments in of the water, sewer, broadband infrastructure. I will tell you this, uh, this was a question that Cus had for me about any possible county-city partnerships. And I will tell you, this is one of the things that we actually do, uh, the county have on the table that, and will probably send a letter to, to you all at some point, all the cities of the county that we are willing to look at if there are places for, you know, some city-county partnerships, we're certainly willing to have that conversation. We haven't made any commitments. We don't have the money yet and a lot, and a lot of people are coming our way with requests and ideas. There are a lot of good ideas. A couple of the ideas that we'll be looking at pretty strongly, aside from things like local business support, particularly those that were hardest hit, you know, like the hospitality industry and others that have suffered through this time. Uh, I mentioned partnerships with local municipalities, but some capital projects. Uh, one of the concerns that we have on a county level is the law and justice backlog. We had several months where we actually couldn't operate the court. And uh, and so although I think we're making progress, uh, there was, there's a lot of catching up. We need to hire some attorneys and base some judge, judge programs to help us uh, with that situation. Uh, and then also to balance our budget this year, we did have to dip into our reserves quite a bit, so I think we'll probably look at that as well. Anyway, that's a, that's a general idea. A couple of things that they said maybe not to do, let me see if I can find it. Well, one of the things they said is, you know, avoid one-time costs, you know, like maybe hiring people or something like that might not be a good idea because you get, you're only going to get the money once, although there is some flexibility, we don't have to spend it right away. We actually have until the end of twenty twenty four. So, you know, that allows you to be a little more creative in that sense. That's probably most what I have here, but uh, anyway, that's what we've learned and, and if I can be helpful and when I learn more, I'm happy to pass it on.
That's a question? Of course. I was just going to ask, uh, can you give us an example about a partnership, a partnership with a city and county like that around economic development?
Um, well. I'll give you one idea, uh, and this is, this is not specifically a city one, but uh, one of the things that we've become aware of recently is a need to try to integrate the radio systems we're coming from for law enforcement, emergency services and this kind of thing. Uh, this was kind of brought to light. This was kind of brought to light during an emergency happen in the West Valley area, west of Yakima recently, where there was a report of an active shooter. So we had all these law enforcement agencies that are all converging on the high school at the same time and had trouble communicating with each other. So, we're, that's one possible thing that we can look at, that, that would be an example.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, because it might be personal or a three-person basis, we have to send, or you're just saying, you said we're just receiving the money. I, I am not exactly sure. My understanding, I believe, is that you'll receive the money. But again, not all the details have been spelled out yet. So, and, and of course, one of the complicating factors for you might be the fact that it's actually going through the state's hands first. And, and we don't really know, you know, if the state's going to, what the state may or may not do. They may just pass it on through, but they may not.
Great. Well, we, we appreciate you coming out and joining us, you know, we invite you to come back, you know. We will probably be calling you.
You are welcome to do that.
Come back and, and join us.
I, I'd be happy to do that, thanks for the opportunity. While I'm at it, why don't I, with mine, just give it to you, just pass my card, my email, my mailing office, so we have to do that. By the way, my wife has known you for quite a while and just very highly.
Oh, thank you very much. Yeah, my sister works with, well, she worked actually with you at the hospital.
Brea?
Brea. Oh, yeah.
Very well, yes.
I sat next to your sister and your wife when we were.
Yeah.
Tell her I said hello.
I will do that, thank you.
Thank you, Alagamendi. All right. So, moving on with presentations, we also have American Legion riders today, and I'll also turn it over to our city administrator.
Thank you. I had a call from Jesse Rodriguez. He and I went to school together, we grew up together and graduates and he joins the service. And he called me this, this morning and kind of was in a predicament because they are trying to do some positive to support veterans. And I know that here in Grandview, we, we, I mean, appreciate the, what the, the commitment they have done to keep us safe. And, and when he, when he shared his story with me, I said, come to council, I said, we can be supported. What they're looking to do is this, this weekend, is they're hoping to use the parking lot at the museum to host an event where, I think he called the boot donation, and it all goes to veterans. And they're going to bring in riders from different cities that are becoming in, they're going to be bringing a trailer that they will park there. And I saw that as a, as a win-win for both sides, as, I mean, they, they get a place where they can display what they needed to display and hopefully get the citizens of Grandview participating and helping with donations. And we get to show off our community because you're going to have people from outside the community that'll be coming to Grandview. And it would be nice for them to come back later in the year when, when, when the flowers and things are opened up. So, I, I asked them to attend tonight because it was a short notice, so they can share their story as to what they've done, what they're going to be doing. And, and I assured them that we would be supportive. So, I, I have Jones, I just met him here just a couple of minutes ago, because I don't have a lot of history with him, but Joe, I'll turn it over to you.
Welcome, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having us. My name is Joe Santos. I am the director of the American Legion Riders. Our post is out of, to the post 130. A little bit of the background, I was a member of the American Legion Riders in 2017, and we stood up in Yakima post 36. And 2017, about a property and a house out there in Zilla, started riding the motorcycle around and noticed that there's a lot of veterans out there. So I took it upon myself to spam up a chapter up there in Zilla, went and talked to, I don't know if you guys know Larry Stewart, who passed away. But Larry gave me the opportunity to start up a chapter with his support. And now we're, we're really helping veterans. A little bit of background about myself, I spent thirty-two years back in duty in the military. And from nineteen eighty-one, two thousand thirteen, and the drive and passion that I have to give back to the veterans because someone took care of me for thirty-two years and have a very successful career. So that's where the passion of helping veterans, helping veterans or still serving veterans comes in. We sort of established chapter in January of twenty, February of twenty twenty, and we did a whole lot despite the COVID, doing it safely. Anywhere from buying tents even baskets from Pearson Food Mart and heading it to veterans within the Yakima County, primarily here in the lower valley. And we also partner with the Veterans Food Pantry. The last two weekends of March, we handed out over three hundred food boxes to veterans and families. And those that were unable to come, we made a personal delivery for your residents with that. So, the reason why we're asking to do a fundraiser is because up and coming months is the only opportunity to do a fundraiser because when the winter starts kicking in, we want to be able to get not only help the veterans, especially those that are homeless, with clothing, but food as well. We're also partner with the Veterans Coalition out of the Yakima County with Dave Brown. And I don't know if you guys heard, but every October, Dave Brown and the Veterans Coalition put together what you call the Veterans Stand Down, where veterans can come and receive dental, haircut, and any type of path of attorneys needed, and any type of military equipment that they can use to keep them warm during the winter months. So that's how we get all these donations, by doing a fundraiser. We also received donation from the casino with the instructions of how to spend that money. And we use that money in a home walk if a veteran or family member, their sole transportation breaks down, i.e. transmission went out, we can help them with the fund that we're given, they help fix their cars. If they are behind in their rent, we can help them pay portion of their rent so they won't be homeless. Or they need food, or their electricity is behind, we help them with that process. And along, again, with body food baskets. Twenty twenty has been very tough for a lot of us, especially veterans and the homeless, yes, for veterans gets run. So, our goal intent is to do as much fundraising as we can so we can help this veterans and hopefully curb the homelessness in our community. Along with that, one of our charities to be a positive contributor to our community as well, in the form of participating with community events. So, if we can get your support to allow us to showcase and in hopes that five people pass a bike and build a boot, a combat boot with extra chains or ones that they have, it'd be appreciated. We developed, we adapted this concept from, I guess you see the firemen on the side of the road with their boot. So we, we adapted that. We have riders from the west side, post seventeen of kills, who are coming over to help us, to support because that's where we got the idea. Along with being the director for the American Legion, post one thirty, I'm also the eastern Washington co-chairman that represents the eastern side at the Department of Washington, American Legion. With that said, any questions, do you have any?
Can I just say that when I, you know, I encourage that we, you know, support, I really appreciate, you know, we have events like this for our children. You know, I know as a mother of three, I, you know, I've had the opportunity in fact to be at events provided by the American Legion. It gives us the opportunity to talk to our kids about, you know, being grateful for the people that have served this country. So, I'll open it up for comments.
I just wanted to find out if there was a way to promote and maybe contact the papers so they can come out and take some pictures and maybe to the next issue that it'll come out.
One of our members, in fact, we just dispatched him last month, knows, he has a friend, he's a veteran also as well, Roger Ryan O'Gammey, that commented and will cover the media coverage for our event. Yeah. So, it's, it's part of that, things that we do as well, so we can help out the community.
Okay.
And I'm hoping for this Saturday, I want to have a fun, we're planning starting, set up by nine, start at ten and be done by two.
Madam.
First, fundraiser for the year, and we're, we're starting a little slow. And hopefully we can continue on, so when we hit summer that we're up and running.
Madam Mayor.
Everett, yes.
As a veteran myself, I appreciate what you've done and are doing. But I was suggesting we may be able to make a mention of the time and place on our Facebook, city Facebook.
Yeah.
I, I would just maybe on the billboard also, the one coming into town, is able to post that.
So Councilmember Diaz suggested also at the entrance of the board or the board events in front. So, okay, so you just need a consensus from council members, or is there any objections to this event taking place Saturday from nine to two?
You're at a formal council meeting, if somebody wants to make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we proceed and approve fundraiser for this Saturday.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve and proceed the opportunity to have this event at the local museum.
In the parking lot of the museum.
At the parking lot from nine a.m. to two p.m. Okay.
You can send us, if you could send us some information so we can get it out on Facebook.
There was, for those who don't like to check out our Facebook page, it's a ZUAN, A O R, post one thirty. And that's basically, I mean, we're posting that, that event. The reason we started, how to do it, the same way, but somehow we didn't get the support with the same way here. And like I said, I'm not letting down anybody, it's probably the COVID stuff, you know, so, yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, if there's no other questions, we'll do a roll call vote. So I'll start with Councilmember Diaz.
Councilmember Diaz votes yes.
Councilmember Everett.
Councilmember Everett votes yes.
Councilmember Jennings. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Jennings is out today. Councilmember Moore.
Councilmember Moore votes yes.
Ozuna.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Rodriguez, yes.
And Councilmember Sowers. Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you very much to both gentlemen, Joe Santos and Jesse Rodriguez for joining us.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, have a great year. Thank you. Okay, moving on.
Thank you very much.
To our twenty twenty-one Arbor Day proclamation.
Thank you.
Okay. On page two, I will read our twenty twenty-one Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Spurman Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion, erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs moderate to the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable source, giving us paper wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values and ends the economic vitality of business areas and unify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And now therefore, I Gloria Mendoza, Mayor of the City of Grandview, Washington, do hereby proclaim April twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, as Arbor Day in the City of Grandview, Washington, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Okay, so, moving on to public comment. At this time, the public may address the council on any topic, whether on the agenda or not, except those scheduled for public hearing. And so we will move forward to our consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on together in council unless a council member requests that items be removed from the consent agenda and discussed and voted upon separately. An item removed from the consent agenda will be placed under unfinished. Okay? So we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. I'll do a roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Diaz.
Yes, votes yes.
Councilmember Everett.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Ozuna.
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Councilmember Sowers.
Yes.
So the motion passed, moving on to active agenda. Items discussed at the six p.m. committee of the whole meeting of an urgent and time-sensitive nature may be added to the active agenda pursuant to City Council Procedures Manual, Section three point one eight. And we have one tonight that's been added, and it will be twenty, Resolution twenty-one dash sixteen that was discussed in the face of committee of the whole meeting. So we will add that to the agenda tonight. So, we will start with our item A on our active agenda, which is our close record public hearing. We'll turn to page thirteen of our packet. Fourteen on our packet. We will start our close record public hearing procedure. The following procedure is used by the Grandview City Council to meet appearance, fairness requirements, and to create or supplement the hearing record. Tonight's close record public hearing will include the following land use proposal. Applicant and property owners, North Forty-four Homes LLC, Youthwood Meadows Manufactured Home Park, Rezone and Conditional Use Permit, turning zoning our dash one low-density residential and our three high-density residential. Proposed zoning is MR Manufactured Home Park. Location of project is on north of Grantport and east of North Youthwood Road, Grandview, Yakima County. Washington parcel numbers, two three zero nine one four dash three two zero zero one and two three zero nine one four dash three two zero zero four. The close record public hearing will now begin. One, this hearing must be fair in, in form and substance as well as appearance thereof, therefore. Is there anyone in the audience who objects to the participation as mayor or city council members' participation in these proceedings? Okay. Moving on, do any of the council members have any interest in this property or issue? Okay, do you, do any of you stand or gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of this hearing? Okay. Can you hear and consider this in a fair and objective manner? So I will go around and I will ask if there is, so Councilmember Ozuna, are there any?
No problems, I can be sure.
Okay, Councilmember Diaz.
No problem too.
Okay, Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Sowers.
I have no problem.
Councilmember Rodriguez. And Councilmember Everett.
I'll be objective.
So moving forward, has any member of the council engaged in any communication outside this hearing with opponents or proponents of this issue to be heard? Okay. So to know if so, that member must be placed on the record and to the substance of any such communication so that other interest parties may have the right at this hearing to be viewed, the substance of this communication. There are no council members that have engaged in communication outside. There are no council members that have, uh, engaged in communication outside. Okay, thank you for, uh, the hearing will continue at this point. Um, there are no, no one will be excusing themselves, so we'll move on. The purpose of this hearing is for the council to review the record and consider the pertinent facts relating to this issue. Okay. Are there any, um, at this point, remove, okay, no new testimony will be allowed. Any clarification of the record being requested by the council members will first be authorized by the mayor after consulting with the city attorney. The record generated will be provided by staff. Staff will now provide a review of the record.
Thank you. Anita Palacio, a city clerk of the city of Grandview. Uh, the item history is North Forty-four Homes LLC submitted a reasonable application, a conditional use permit application for parcel numbers two three oh nine one four dash three two zero zero one and two three oh nine one four dash three two zero zero four, consisting of twenty-four point eight four acres located north of Grantport and east of North Youthwood Road, Grandview, Washington. The applicants requested a rezone from R one low-density residential and R three high-density residential to M R manufactured home park. The applicants also requested a conditional use permit to develop and construct a manufactured home park. On February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, a public hearing was held before the hearing examiner to receive comments on the proposed rezon and conditional use permit. The public hearing was continued to March fourth, twenty twenty-one, and a copy of the hearing examiner's recommendation, R Z number twenty twenty-one dash oh one and C U P number twenty twenty-one dash oh one, dated March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, is in your agenda packet. Following the closed record public hearing, should council consider to accept the hearing examiner's recommendation to approve the requested rezon, the manufactured home park? Um, the, that will be the, the recommendation from staff. And if council decides to accept that, at the next regular council meeting on April twenty-seventh, that would present an ordinance changing the zoning classification. And then should council approve the request of rezon at the April twenty-seventh fee? The hearing examiner in that event would also approve the conditional use permit for the proposed manufactured home park.
Okay, thank you, Anita. Council members will now consider the record and discuss among themselves the facts and testimony from the open record hearing. So if there are any requests for clarification. Did it go south from the council?
Also, we have online the applicant and also our planner. Is on Zoom with us.
Okay, so, um, if there are any requests for clarification, uh, you should direct them to me, and it must be specified to the record. The mayor, after consulting with city attorney, will authorize the clarification or deny it based on the opinion of the city attorney. So if you have any clarification of the.
Council member Rodriguez.
Okay.
I mean, just on the manufactured home park, what exactly, there's several, I just want, what would it be?
Okay.
In the packet. Yes, in the big packet.
What is your question? The specific question, I mean, are, are the lots being sold, or is it just they're going to be? They're not selling, they're going to be providing homes and renting their lots.
Lots will be owned by the developer, they'll be rented. Books that, that will bring in a, a home and the developer, I believe, will also sell the homes to the people that would be renting from you. Uh, the, the difference in this one, because I'm sure you're picturing other courts, is the difference on this one, the development will be similar to a, uh, the one that you just approved on Grand Ridge Streets will be the wider streets, the forty-foot street, curb gutter, sidewalks, lights. Uh, it will be the same infrastructure as residential area. The, uh, this project will also include some improvements to North Youthwood, uh, which will be widening half the road, adding curb gutter and sidewalk to the east side of it, adding some streetlights to it. So, uh, the development will be similar to main residential development, other than the lots will be smaller.
Any other clarification? Council members, okay, we'll go with council member Diaz.
I'm sorry, because I'm zooming, I can't, can't hear what you said.
Actually can, uh, discuss the proposal, the content of the whole package.
Any clarification or requests for?
Well, I guess I would ask, um, especially for all the council, uh, membership, uh, one of the recommendations that was made by the Yakima Valley Conference of Government was, uh, uh, to deny the, the, uh, the, the application, and, and they stated very clearly why. Uh, and also, the state, Washington State Department of Transportation had some concerns on the exit of, uh, one eighty, exit seventy. The traffic flow, uh, was run in the high traffic movement.
You need to request clarification of the hearing examiners.
But not, not discussion.
Well, if you have, if you have questions about what the hearing examiner proposed, that's where you need to request clarification.
Okay, so my other question would be, the, uh, the, uh, the Grandview comprehension, uh, and, is that? Because I see that, that it goes against some of the information that's in the packet regarding that.
But the hearing examiner ruled that it didn't. The hearing examiner ruled that it did not.
It says?
That it didn't go against the comprehensive plan.
Of, of some of the staff finding in that report. Not, not answered. Yeah, I, I saw that rebuttal from, from one to the other.
So the hearing examiner is recommending approval. So he heard that the staff report recommended denial. Correct. So that was taken into consideration, and he, then his, his.
I, I saw the rebuttal that they gave and so forth.
Right.
There's the questions that were in. The way the council members, whatever, what's our options? Approved, may, not approved.
The hearing examiner's report, uh, is, is contained at pages seventeen to. Just sort of, this report is seventeen forty-five.
Yeah, you read it.
In the packet, this packet, we're talking, this is the material that the hearing that for him. In addition to testimony and on which he based the recommendation. So the approval, the, this is his recommendation. So council's option is to accept the hearing examiner's recommendation to reject the hearing examiner's recommendation or to approve it with.
Can you, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, can you repeat that? You faded out. You forget you're talking.
With modification or condition.
Pardon me?
Or to approve it with modifications or conditions.
And we cannot be tabled for modifications and improvements?
So the question is, can it be tabled for improvements or modifications? So tonight, uh, the recommendation is to approve the, uh, the, uh, recommended, um, or to modify, if that's, uh, so at this, you know, at this time, we are discussing, and you could ask for clarification of, uh, what's presented before you. And so we would have to make that determination tonight. So at this point, um, we are allowing discussion, you know, between city council.
Just to clarify, I think so we don't get confusing. I, I think that there was been, uh, you were referring to information that's there, but that was during that hearing. At this event, we, we had the hearing examiner made his recommendation, which is included in the packet. And based on his recommendation, that's what we need to take action on. And on page fifteen, number seven, you have three choices. A is to approve as recommended from the unit examiner, or B to approve with conditions, or C modify with or without the applicant's concurrence provided. And it is, we have, so. Six.
Let me continue and move forward, and then we can get to that point. So, um, if, if there is any clarification of the record, um, if clarification of the record is authorized, um, do we have anyone, uh, that would like to request further clarification that's joining us for Zoom? You must, um, address the council, begin by stating your name and address for the record. Speed slowly and clearly, uh, you will be allowed to only provide the clarification of the record as authorized. Uh, no testimony will be allowed. Okay, so moving on, now that we have reviewed the record concerning this issue, this subject is open for discussion, and the council may approve or recommend certain options, approval, you know, the hearing examiner, approve with conditions or modify with or without the applicant's, uh, concerns, provided that the modifications do not enlarge the area or spoke of the project, increase the density of proposed building size, significantly increase adverse environmental impacts as determined by the, uh, responsible official, deny, uh, reapplication or resubmital is permitted, deny with prejudice, uh, reapplication or resubmital is not allowed for one year. We, uh, we demand for further proceedings and or, uh, evidentiary hearing in accordance with section fourteen, uh, dot zero nine dot zero seven zero.
It just, I mean, just for clarification, denial would mean that the property would remain.
So I will. We have a motion on the floor to approve, to approve as recommended by the hearing examiner. Okay. So I will open it up. It sounds like there is, uh.
Madam.
Council member Everett.
Yes, I would move, uh, to deny, because it sounds like the motion to approve died for lack of a second. I would move to, uh, deny the application. Uh, and I'm doing so based on the recommendation of staff. And particularly on page one ninety-three, quote, "To break it all down in its simplest terms, this development as proposed is too many units of this specific type and intensity of power, uh, housing." I think it's, we should not be going that intense, that, that huge, that large of a number of, of, uh, houses this, uh, of this kind. That's why I made the motion. I believe the, 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 they can reapply. Am I correct, Madam, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, I don't see any reason they couldn't reapply. Council member Rodriguez seconds.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to deny the application, uh, as presented by the hearing examiner. And I will, uh, you know, ask, uh, if there's any further discussion and if all council members are. Okay. Okay, council member Souters.
If I wish, I have to vote tonight, I would. Oh, or what is just except, what's on the floor right now, the denial giving them an opportunity. I believe it's too many, too many houses on. Where the amount of property and the area, you know, in a nice neighborhood like, you know, and I felt like, I felt like it's too many, too many buildings and too small property. And how many people could be living in those houses? That's my opinion, that's my thought. If I have to vote for the most, the fun, or I would, for denying it, an opportunity to.
Okay, we have, um. Okay, we have Brad Bochep that's requesting to speak.
No, I, the record is, is has to be defined to what was reported in camera. And if you test modify, uh, staff, uh, by the hearing examiner.
Okay.
There's no further discussion.
So further discussion?
Uh, Ma- Madam Mayor, I'm confused.
Okay.
I thought we started voting. Was I wrong?
Motion and a second, and I opened it up for.
Madam Mayor, was there a point of clarification that could be made? There's a gross error happening in this conversation.
Oh, there's, sorry, you can't take, you know, uh, the record.
The record, the record needs to be explained, though. It's being misquoted, and it's, it's there in front of people, but it's not being understood. Point of order. I thought we had the opportunity for hearing. We'd gotten through the discussion of the hearing. I think people had an opportunity to, to speak, and we were discussing it, and then we put a motion on the floor, and we were voting on it. I think anything else is out of order.
We have a motion and a second, and, uh, is there any further discussion by council members? Okay, I will go around and do a, um.
Roll.
Roll call vote. And I will start with council member Everett.
I vote to deny the application with an opportunity to resubmit.
Okay, council member Diaz.
I vote to deny the applicant.
Council member Moore.
I vote, yeah.
As the votes that we would approve, the hearing examiner's recommendation. Council member Ozuna.
I would go to the minute.
Okay. Council member Rodriguez.
Vote to the minute.
And council member Souters.
Vote to the line with the opportunity for them to resubmit.
Okay. All right, motion passed. And we will move on to our second. Thank you very much for joining us, uh, and we will move on to the next public hearing. Uh, dash twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-six, six-year transportation improvement program amendment. Uh, dash twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-six, six-year transportation improvement program amendment. So, public hearing twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six, six-year transportation improvement program amendment. Notice is hereby given that the city council of the city of Grandview, Washington will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, at seven P M. to receive comments, comments of an amendment to the twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six, six-year transportation improvement program. You procure right of way to accommodate new roadway design for the old England entire highway improvements from Grand Ridge Avenue to Elm Street. New governor in se- probation.
Forty-seven, Mayor.
I apologize, moving on, for public hearing procedure, the apology procedure is used by the Grandview City Council to meet appearance of fairness requirements. The public hearing for the purpose of receiving comments on an amendment to the twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-six six-year transportation improvement program to procure right of way to accommodate new roadway design for the old England Empire Highway improvements from Grand Ridge Avenue to Elm Street is now open. Okay. Before hearing from the public, the administrative public works director, Caswell presents.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe about a year, year and a half ago, our engineers attended a council meeting and talked about the need for acquiring a couple of corners to improve radiusness. One would be the intersection of Grand Ridge and Fifth. The other one would be both Lane and Fifth, and the other one would be South Division, and, you know, as it turns into O I E. About nine years ago, we had received the grant or design of O I E, which is comes as part of it from Grand Ridge to city limits at O I E and Elm. And, uh, the, the, uh, product, the design is funded through, uh, the U T, I C funding, and, uh, the design or the, excuse me, the, uh, right-of-way portion of it would also be funded through that. And we go, we'll just give this all put together for the hopes that if the transportation bill is approved by the administration that we have be ready to go. And so at this time, it also gives us, because we're going into the right-of-way phase, it gives us an additional ten years before we have to go into construction. As a funding through the federal, uh, U T guidelines is once you have the design completed, you must be under construction within ten years, or you could be faced with a penalty of having to repay the funding that you was provided for. Uh, this gives us ten more years before we go into, before we, before we would need to construct the project. And, uh, like I said, we're, we're hoping that, uh, within a couple of years, uh, there will be some funds available through the Yakima County Conference of Governments that we could have, that we're hoping that the government will buy a transportation package. This will make it a better, a better design.
Thank you. Public comments will now be received. When you address the council, begin by stating your name and address for the record. Okay, I hear none. Comments received by mail will now be entered into the record. The city clerk will read any.
There were none.
Okay, the public testimony portion of this hearing is now closed. No further comments will be received. We go now to forty-eight.
This, uh, the, the budget amendment that you just made presented here with resolution twenty twenty-one fourteen. So then, uh, council then approves this, and we will give the documents to U T, get it on the books.
Do we need a motion for this rule?
I will approve resolution number twenty twenty-one dash fourteen. Twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-six, six-year transportation improvement program to procure right of way to accommodate new roadway design of the old Empire Highway Improvement from Grand Ridge Avenue.
We have a motion and a second to approve. So through which, um, any comments or questions? Okay, if there is more comments or questions, I will vote a roll call vote. Council member Diaz. Council member Everett.
Council member Everett, both, yes.
Council member Moore. Council member Ozuna.
Yes.
Council member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Council member Sowers.
Yes.
Motion passed. So moving on to item D. Ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero four, amending the twenty twenty-one annual budget.
Move the coordinates number twenty twenty-one dash amending the twenty twenty-one annual budget.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero four, amending the twenty twenty-one annual budget that was discussed at the last meeting. And so I will do a roll call vote. Um, council member Diaz. Council member Everett.
Yes.
Council member Moore.
Yes.
Council member Ozuna.
Yes.
Council member Rodriguez.
Yes.
And council member Sowers.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Moving on to item E. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash fifteen, approving task order number ten twenty-one dash zero five of H L A Engineering and land surveying from the Elm Street people resurface.
Madam Ma- Mayor, this council member, I move the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-one fifteen, approving the task order for the twenty twenty-one oh five with, um, H L N Engineering.
Great. I hear a second.
Council member Everett, a second.
We have, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution number twenty twenty-one dash fifteen. That was also discussed at a previous meeting, and I will do a roll call vote, starting with council member Diaz.
Council member Diaz, yes.
Council member Everett.
Yes.
Council member Moore.
Yes.
Council member Ozuna.
Yes.
Council member Rodriguez.
Yes.
And council member Sowers. Okay, so we will now, uh, move to item F, which was added tonight. It's the twenty twenty-one dash sixteen resolution approving the final plan to Grand Ridge State, Phase Four, located on Grand Ridge Road, that was discussed tonight. So we have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixteen. I'll do a roll call vote. Council member Diaz.
Council member Diaz, vote yes.
Council member Everett.
Yes.
Council member Moore.
Yes.
Council member Ozuna.
Yes.
Council member Rodriguez.
Yes.
And council member Sowers.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. And, uh, that concludes the items on the agenda. We'll move on to unfinished and new business. Okay, city administrator and staff reports.
They took the last three.
Okay, mayor and council member reports. Council member Sowers.
This is not a report. This is a thank you to Public Works. Yes, that's who it goes to. Great job at Fasten Park with all the gravel along the pathway. And the trees that you're putting in with all of the wind today. Believe me, the dust was really fell down, and I want to acknowledge the work done by the Public Works Department to control the dust in that area, you know, by keeping the the gravel and stuff fresh. So thank you very much.
So I will be, um, so tonight, I want to address, I'm gonna pass out a response to council member Everett's letter that I received in regards to the last meeting that we held here to discuss economic development. And I want to make sure that every concern that, you know, any of the council members have, that we take it serious and that we address it. So I'm gonna pass. I apologize that council member Everett won't have a copy. I'm gonna read it, um, so that we are able to discuss it. Um, I will also, uh, read a, the letter that came in by council member Everett, and also a memorandum that I received from our city administrator after I discussed matters with him, so.
Madam Mayor, are you also going to include the letter all the council people received from Mr. Kimbrough?
I guess, uh, the letters have been provided to all council members.
So all those, all those written communications will be part of the record?
Pardon me, what was that?
All those written communications will become part of the record.
All communication will be part of the record, yes. So, uh, yes, uh, you all should also have a copy of the letter that came in by Rick Kingdom. So let me just start. I'll be addressing council member Everett, who asked for me to provide leadership. Council member Everett, I, uh, you know, I appreciate that, um, you're joining us. I had some concern that he might need the meetings because he has done that in the past. And so I think that it's very important that, uh, you know, that we address this issue to, you know, hopefully avoid these things from happening in the future. And one should first learn to follow to be a great leader. I'm here to serve the people of Grandview and to improve the quality of life of the people of Grandview. Leaving the city is a team effort. We will make decisions as a team. I would not have stepped up if I did not know I was capable of leading Grandview to the next level and the hard work ahead of us. I served as council member. I knew the challenges we faced as a team. Each of us individually might have the talent, but talent must be matched with teamwork in order to, uh, win. We must work as a team. We must get prepared and well organized. A great leader faces challenges and is honest with his team. There is work to be done. We've been running in opposite directions. Some council members have been developing their own game plans, criticizing other team members while others are not speaking up. This has to stop, and we need to pull together as a team. We cannot allow distractions, and council members need to treat staff, department heads, and others making presentations at our meetings with respect. We have a responsibility to protect and defend the city and its employees. So I approach every position in the same manner, and the process has never let me down. It is an amazingly simple but highly effective approach. It involves working alongside and getting to know people in key positions, uh, employee systems, day-to-day practices. It also involves face-to-face relationships, talking, playing, laughing, and enjoying people who live, uh, who live, work, and visit us. It involves listening, strategizing, and trusting. It also involves dealing with the challenges of the role with the same ease as the fun tasks of my work. This approach needs to areas that need attention like today. I do, however, want to promise you that the city of Grandview will continue to thrive and grow. A brief statement of my approach as, uh, worked as mayor. I met with, I have met with businesses, citizens, organizations such as Rotary, Chamber of Commerce, uh, schools, superintendent, administrators, staff, other city leaders like Rick Kimbrough, who in fact sent us a letter. I have personally met with him, and most council members honored my invitation personally. I have invited all council members to sit down with me and, you know, mentioned to me they'd like to see in the city. And for those council members who have yet to accept my invitation to be face-to-face to discuss the city that we represent, my invitation still stands. I have also met and talked to people who live and come to work here. This task will continue to be a priority for as long as I serve as mayor. My first year, I assessed the needs of the city and the people who live and work here. I assess strengths and weaknesses of our city departments. I have assessed strengths and weaknesses of our department heads. That is my assessment, and in fact, I met with them today to make sure that they noticed that we have great departments and department heads that are ready, willing, and very capable to take the city to the next level. I have confidence that our department heads, under the direction of our highly experienced city administrator, have what it takes to lead their staff, uh, to the growth and development of our city. Now, our second year as mayor, I have assessed our, you know, and I'm continuing to assess our city council strength and weaknesses, and, uh, working on team building and, you know, in hopes that we get to design a growth and development action plan as a team. After two years of council meetings as mayor and four years as council member, it is my respectful and sincere assessment. And I did, uh, you know, tell all council members, my very first day that I took oath, is that I would, you know, treat everyone with respect. So it's my, uh, you know, respectful and sincere assessment that here at city council is where the team needs to strengthen. Uh, which brings me to address council member Everett's letter, and I will read the, the letter to you. And so it was, of course, addressed to Mayor Mendoza. I'm writing, uh, I am writing because I am very disappointed at last night's meeting. Apparently, I was not clear enough in what I had asked and expected of the meeting. While almost everything that the council does touches on economic development, that is not specifically what I was hoping for. As I have previously said, it is unclear to me whether we have any goals for the city, or if we are just hoping that someone drops by and does something nice. I have no idea what you or council hope to achieve. This is my opinion. Result in an unattractive and uninflamed city, not developing in any coherent way, and not likely to result in. It was my hope that the council can come together and establish a vision and goals for the city. Obviously, if this happens, it will, uh, include some economic developments, but of what kind? I don't know, since I have no idea of where the city wants to go. Perhaps you want the council to simply be chair dudes. However, I have no idea what I am supposed to chair for. I hope that the, that at the next meeting or meetings, we focus on establishing goals and priorities. And I hope that you can help provide you, uh, a sign of council member Everett. So I will start with council member Everett, uh, stating that he was not clear enough on what he asked and expected. Council member Everett was clear. He requested an in-person meeting with no agenda to allow pre-discussion when he made the.
Council, uh, ma- Madam Mayor, I'm going to object to what you're doing. I don't believe I have ever personally attacked you in a public forum like the council meeting, and that's what you're doing now.
Well, I apologize, council member Everett.
Team building, I don't believe, if you attack somebody.
What I am doing tonight, and I think it's important that we do this, and, and this is exactly why I have made several, you know, uh, comments at council meetings that that we need to make sure that anything that if you submit a letter to myself or to any city staff, it is our duty and responsibility to discuss it. And the only way.
I'm not objecting to you discussing it, but your discussion is not a discussion of, of the concept of the letter. It's an attack on me.
So we will, I'm going to respond to what happened in preparation of this. So council member Everett requested that our staff, our staff provide pens and paper to hang on the wall, which were provided. But as we know, that was not possible because you did not show to the meeting, and we were unable to do. Council member Everett is now, uh, communicating to me, and I, it comes across to my, to me, and it would be. Communicating to me and I, it comes across to my, to me and it would be my opinion. That it is now a blame as to why the meeting did not go well. So I recommended, if you all remember, that I recommended that we have the retreat in the month of May. At the community center to assure that we can meet in person with a facilitator to allow the facilitator to write our ideas. And to provide a statement of work, however, Councilmember Everett made the motion. And is now complaining that things did not go well and so. The second paragraph, Councilmember Everett claims that he did, he does not know of any goals that the city has. And no idea what council hopes to achieve. When I became mayor in the first year, I shared my visions for the city with the council members, which are as follows. I asked the city administrator if he knew city council's current goals. Here is what he provided and you have it right in front of you and I will read it. Please consider this as follow-up to your question regarding Councilmember. Michael Everett comment that staff does not know what council's goals are and I will break. My answer into three different categories. Businesses, top priority is a hotel, we have been working on this for at least the last three years. We have a location selected, a developer to work with, a hotel chain to work with and we completed the feasibility study. Second priority is a drugstore. You know, and of course, Walgreens is, but it could be, you know, any drugstore. Third priority is a sit-down restaurant such as McDonald's, Ginnie's or Black Angeles. Amenities and aquatic center, this has been on the books for a very long time and we have taken it to the voters without success. A promoter to the amphitheater to promote concerts of all course. The WWTP was identified as a possible location. City services say city to see lower crime rates and make interaction between the officers and the public. So. I was going to, you know, I also have discussed with council that I was going to reach out to community members. So that they could share what they, the taxpayers wanted. After these community visits, I reported in previous city council meetings that the top request of the community. Members, I can businesses and leaders that I have met with was that they wanted to see in, you know, our. Grandview Chamber of Commerce that has attended some of those meetings. They want to put Grandview, for us to put Grandview on the map. Additional housing, which is what we see happening, more restaurants and hotels. The information I gathered was that they want year-round jobs, which most of. Industries, industries and new commercial businesses are providing, so this goal is being met. They wanted better housing with all the new, you know, with all new development in place now, this goal is being met. And as you can see, we have several applications, which denied, one of those applications was denied. But housing is a need in our community, they wanted better housing with all new development in place now. This goal is being met, they wanted safe neighborhoods and as you know, we are in the top ten. In Washington is one of the safest cities, so this goal is being met. They wanted a clean and attractive city because of our top of the line graffiti program for attractive city entrances. Our beautiful downtown, this goal is being met, they want to Grandview on the map with social media market, marketing. An open microphone with the mayor program that I do on the radio and social media, our new webpage design that. You know, council members, you know, is meeting, this goal is being met and I will stop there because for sake of time. But these goals are going to be ongoing initiatives. And just because Councilmember Everett does not agree with the approach and the goals. And he states does not know where the city is going, does not mean that the city is not moving forward. I'm really excited to share that, you know, with the, you know, webpage design that, you know. We came up with, this city is on the move and growing and that is in the words of webpage design. His opinion is an unattractive and unappealing city, my response is clearly this is, is. Opinion, an opinion that I and thousands of citizens that we all represent most certainly not share and agree with. This was probably for me the most disturbing comment of all because it. Yes, and I, you know, again, it. You know, shows that sometimes we don't take into account, you know, the way that we communicate with council. And so, I, the third paragraph is Councilmember Everett states that he does not know where the city is going. And the information above that I had just shared is noticeably clear as to where we are going. Number five, Councilmember Everett wants the council to be chair leaders but has no idea what he is to cheer about. Everywhere I go, I get complimented on what Grandview has, what Grandview is doing and how good our staff is to work with. Look around and if you truly cannot see all the success that we're having, then you need to truly ask yourself, what am I missing? After reading Councilmember Everett's opinion of our city and team, it explains a lot about his. Negative behavior towards staff, city and partners. As mayor, I genuinely concern about, you know, this being ongoing in our city council meetings. And, and so in the six years that I have sat here in the, you know, office, I mean, here in council chambers. I think that it's something that we definitely need to discuss. Councilmember Everett hopes I can provide leadership and so. I think that this is something that has to be addressed with all council members now. Because economic development is a hard subject and to be successful, we must work together. We must be flexible and open-minded, but the most important thing is, are we doing what our citizens want? How many of our council members have truly spent the amount of time that I have in this last year meeting with Grandview citizens? How many of the council members have met with our school superintendent and understand that they, you know, the needs that they have. As, you know, to continue to grow, how many of the council members have met with the local commercial businesses? To understand what they want, I have done this, so I know where we need to go. And I need your help as a governing board to help me take this great community of ours to the next level. We will accomplish this by having professional and organized meetings, by being supportive to one another and by supporting our amazing staff. So now I would like to go around the table and ask.
Madam, madam mayor, I'm gonna object once again. If it's, it appears to me, first of all, I was successful, you actually articulated some goals, I hadn't heard that before. I wonder how many other council people knew what the goals of Grandview were, but secondly, that's not the issue. I find your statements somewhat hypocritical in that you talk about, I want to build a team, I want to build a team. I want to build a team, however, you have clearly excluded me from the team. In your comments tonight, you have attacked me on a personal level. I don't believe that what I wrote attacked you on a personal level. And therefore, I, I am, I am deeply offended, I'm gonna leave the meeting, if you just wanna. If you wanna criticize me, go ahead and talk about me behind my back, it's easier for you.
I think that the reason that it's important for me to address the letter is so that we could as a team, you know.
We're not a team, we're not a team, you just said we're not a team. You just, you, you can't tell me that I'm negative and all these other things and I don't do it right and I'm part of a team. There's a team, but I'm not a member, that's what you've articulated.
So I have a question on the letter, what, what were you expecting, were you expecting a response to your letter?
Yes, I thought you would say it's time for us to lay out and work as a, as a team and establish. Goals, apparently you established some goals, I don't know if the team established any.
My, my concern is this and the reason that I wanted to address this today is because. My recommendation is that we have a, a meeting and that we have a retreat. But I want to make sure that we don't have the same situation that happened at the last meeting.
The last meeting was a legitimate meeting in which opened free discussion. Not everybody has to sit there and smile nicely, you have to speak your truth. And while you've spoken to some citizens, so have I. And I would suggest that Mr. Kimbrough's letter suggests there are other citizens. That are not sure what we're, where we're going, but as I said, I don't sit here and have to be personally attacked. You want to personally attack, go have coffee.
No, I wanted to respond to your letter and know that I have, you know, I did meet.
You didn't invite a personal meeting, by the way, to talk, respond to the letter. You just do it in a public way, it was not an attack on you, I'm sorry you took it that way.
So Councilmember Everett, I have met at least three times, in fact, the day that you made the motion. For us to have the retreat, I met with you earlier that day.
You did, but not after you got the letter and were offended, I'm leaving the meeting, sorry, goodbye.
Well, thank you for joining us, so I will. Open up the meeting again because we're going to, it's Councilmember Everett's recommendation that we schedule another meeting. To talk about economic development and so I want to make sure that we don't have what happened at the last meeting. Where we were asked, you know, to provide writing material, which is around the corner, provide markers and. When the meeting, as you were all present, the meeting was not a successful meeting because. Half of the council was here, the rest of the council was losing and we were. You know, the following day, you know, we were in fact, that day of the meeting. You know, we had even discussion as to whether to allow the court to welcome and greet, you know, the, the council. What my concern is, is not that we had a, you know, unproductive meeting because we had to close. Because obviously, technology, but my concern is that. We again, have another meeting and are not able to, you know. Take notes and be able to have free discussion, no agenda and then receive, you know, another letter. I, I personally don't, you know, take offense to it, but I do have a problem, you know, when, you know, we are. Saying that the staff did not understand, you know, what, you know, plan was. The staff followed every, you know, recommendation that council member ever had. And so now I'm opening it up because I do think that at some point as a council. You have to, you have to say what it is that you would like to direct the staff to. Because it can't just be, you know, one council member that requests and then things don't go as planned. And then we come back and, you know, the staff is the one that, you know, gets. You know, treated in the way that, you know, that they have been treated in the past. So I'm gonna, you know, go around the table and I would like to hear from council members. How you would like to proceed with this economic development meeting or. My recommendation was that we wait again, you know, until we're able to meet at the. At the. The community center, sorry, at the community center so that we're able to move around. And we're able to have a facilitator to take notes and to be able to come back with a recommendation. Or plan that we can, you know, reference back to. Here at City Council, we cannot do that, you know, because of the space, you're all, you know, sitting down and. Where you would either have to have the staff, you know, taking notes, it's just does not allow for us to. You know, to be able to do so, so I will start and go around the table, so.
But I think that the request for paper and markers was my call and it then mentioned that because I saw that as a necessity. Or if it had double, on the way I, I saw coming. But my concern is that I think that we can just accept each other's opinion when we're discussing a thing and that could have ended for intensive. I think we're all grown up in this, this chamber and I think all experiences are different settings and I think. We can leave our eagles at the door and, and, and actually work for the betterment of the community for Grandview. And we all do it in a different way, how we approach the community and how we talk to people. I personally have also talked to business management for some businesses here in town. About certain things, but you know, that's besides the point, I think we can just come in with our. Hearts set to work together and, and not take offense to somebody else's opinion or what they say.
I'm just being you, you as well, I mean, I think we're not ready for economic development planning session yet. I think economic development is happening, whether we plan or not, I think it's good. I think what we need is to build our team better. Be able to function in a respectful and, you know, productive manner when we can move forward. So I think we need to do a little bit of that, a little reflection, closer to make sure that we operate. We're ready to go into a planning session, we can all be objective and providing what is productive and not. You know, hey, while we're all going or whatever, I just think that we need to do that, whether, I remember we do it, I think we need to. Get together and make sure we're all on the same page and, you know, we're gonna operate in certain. Rules, if you want to call it, practices that is positive and objective and move forward. We get to that point, then we're ready to do economic development planning or, you know, if on the world or western one or. Though we get our act together.
Yes.
I think it's not gonna be useful for us.
I'm just saying, I think that, you know. It was being said, I think if we take, you know, what Cuss has put together here and I think, I think that we need to. Are these, some of these goals are already met, we have new goals, we need to add our new business, our amenities. State services and develop what we think we need to have and that through all that, we started developing. But we have to set some goals first. And we do have some, I, you know, I think, but as we all come together, we realize that there has been some going on in the past. Coming in at different stages and maybe different, for the highest certain thing happening. But again, as a team, we come together and, and. Establish things as priorities or what we'd like to see. Anything we're gonna have to do, that happens. Whatever, we just have to realize what we, for citizens, that's the thing.
Has it, I think if, last time we had a retreat was six, seven years ago at the library. And at that time, didn't we go around the table and early, wrote down goals? So if we can, if we're gonna have another retreat. Bring them goals out, because, I mean, they're there and I think most of them have already been met. And then talk a little bit about economic development, but everything else that we want to talk about, not just that. We're gonna spend money, I think it was a six, seven hour day, but I mean, it's, it's open for everybody and I think the library, everybody was there.
Yeah, and, and I, so as far as the retreat and, and tonight's, you know, letter, I. Personally, and you have seen at many meetings that my recommendation is always to, you know. To be open, to be honest, but at the same time, you know, we do have to be respectful. And it has to go both ways, I, you know, I have seen that. You know, we have our department heads come and do a presentation and sometimes, you know. And it's not all council members and I do agree that we have to question and we have to, you know, clarify, ask for clarification. But I think that, you know, when we're talking about growth and development. There has to be a consensus and a, you know. Expectation and how we're going to, you know, work together as a team. And I, you know, it's not comfortable addressing, you know, letters like this. But I think that when, when you do put things in writing. And you're, you're going to submit them to the mayor or a staff member, you should expect that there be a response. And I know that, you know, there's a situation that happened last, at the last meeting was unfortunate. It should have ended there, it should have been like, you know, technology didn't allow for us to have a pre-discussion or a meeting. Because Councilmember Everett or the council members that were at home could not hear the council members that were here. So, you know, I think. We, I can certainly say I was. Uh, we, I can certainly say I was. Um, surprised, you know, to receive this letter where, you know, it is. Clear that council member Everett was. And so I have to come back and say, okay, here we are again. He's saying provide some leadership, some direction. And I have done that and in. Uh, you know, and have gone to, you know, directly to this office. We come out thinking we have a plan. And then, you know, we have situations like what happened that day. So I'm at the point where, you know, I need council members to say. You know, is that the direction that you want to go for us to do, to have another because. I know council member Everett's desire is to have an economic development. So at this, uh, you know, at this time, I have to make sure that, you know. Come to, you know, so that I can direct, you know, staff to, you know, go forward. So it doesn't look like the mayor just ignored the request. We don't, you know, want to have a retreat. I again think that, you know, we should wait until we're able to have a facilitator. Who, you know, make sure that we have a productive meeting. Because we're gonna see, you know, what had happened at the last meeting probably. You know, the, the outcome. And so again, I think we have, yes.
So procedurally. We had a motion in the second. To continue the meeting to April twentieth. Okay, council already has made the decision. To continue the meeting to April twentieth.
Okay.
You can make a motion to change that. You can make a motion to. Counsel at the procedurally right now. And I haven't issued the new notice. I was telling Cuss today, I haven't issued it yet, because I want to make sure. This all worked, that we didn't have the technical difficulties. That we had the last one occur again. But you do have. Council has decided to have another meeting.
Uh, it's that sense that maybe not everybody would be present, but we all can present. Probably the best type could happen. We're gonna have them. Will be a motion to table it or.
Be scheduled, if you want to be scheduled till a later date and. I don't know, I think, uh. We're supposed to get what the evaluation in three weeks of whether we stay in state three or not. So I think, uh. I think shoot for your may, uh. If, if we can still meet in person.
Well, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm gonna turn it over to, you know, council to decide.
Why don't we just say mid May and then, you know, we can work on the specifics and who we're at.
You can, you can permit up at your first meeting in May. Like, you know, first council meeting in May. We can see how things are and then at that point, somebody can make a motion this May fifteenth or. We have to see where we are in, in that time.
I would move that we, uh. Also the April twentieth meeting. And, and have a further discussion at our next council meeting, first council meeting in May. Okay, that, that council, you give your second step.
We have a motion and a second to postpone, um, the. And the council, the council meeting.
And, and have a discussion at first council meeting.
Second, I'll do a roll call vote. Council member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Council member Rosina.
Yes.
Council member, uh. More, sorry, and council member BS.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so motion passed and I just want to say that. Um, I appreciate, you know, all of you. I know it's never comfortable to have these discussions. But I really think that, uh, they're necessary. At some point, we, we need to address. The uncomfortable if we want to strengthen. Um, you know, I, I think that it's time, you know, that council members and, you know. Uh, mayor and staff, I think it's time that we all really look at. How we're going to, you know, free one another. If we want to continue to be as. Um, successful as we've been, as you can see, there's good things that are coming. Um, you know, we, we have business, new business coming into town. We have, you know, new housing development. We're going to, you know, continue to, to see that, you know, we have applications, you know, to. Uh, you know. Uh, accommodate some of the requests of the community, such as. You know, charging stations. And so there are some great things. I will say that there's been times when, you know, staff. Uh, has, you know, hesitated and we shouldn't, you know, hesitate to share good news. Because we have, you know, been in, in situations where we come share good news and then, you know, uh. We are, and I say we, because as mayor, I know I've been in that, you know, situation where. Uh, I've been, you know, questioned as to who authorized, you know, the mayor to do that. When then I have to go back and pull out motions that say, well, section sixty eight, you know, this council member authorized. And again, I don't have a problem when it comes, you know, directed at me. But when it goes, you know, directed at, uh, at the employees that I know. Are, you know, uh, doing a good job, um, you know, and are. Having great audits. I mean, there's just so many, you know, successful things that are happening. Um, you know, I met with the department heads today and then just tells you sitting and hearing just how. They handle certain things with every, you know, department. And we have, you know, ill qualified department heads that have been here for over twenty years. You know, as mayor, it does concern me that, you know, we've seen it happen in the past where. If we don't start appreciating what we have and appreciating the staff. You know, it gets to the point where they say, well, why even, you know. Come excited to a city council to share good news with, you know, where even the good news is not. Uh, you know, appreciated. So. I know that, that as you can see, you know, the, the council members that decided to sit through the difficult discussion. You cannot raise a difficult discussion and not sit around, you know, for. Uh, you know, the response. And so it has happened more than once where, you know, we're. Uh, ask the question and if we don't like the answer, you know. Turn off the computer or you walk out of the room. It's not the first time that that has happened. And so I want to make sure that, you know, that we're gonna raise difficult discussions. We should be ready, you know, to. You know, to hear what other council members have to say. So. I, I appreciate you all, you know, sitting through this very, you know, uneasy topic, but. I will once again tell you that I believe that, you know, the city's gonna continue to thrive. Whether, you know, one, uh, you know, member is not on the same page. Um, it's gonna thrive whether I'm here or not. I think we're at that point, you know, I think that, uh. The city is at the point where we can't stop it. Thank you very much and council member Rosina.
I just want to say that I think you've been doing an excellent job in your leadership. It takes a lot of courage to do what you just did to address that better. So I think you're in a tough position. I think you're doing a good job. I don't know if anybody else wants to take on that job, me. But I, you know, I think, you know, guy doesn't tell us what we need to do and that's, you know, we. We go down that direction. So I just want to say that. And I think you're headed in the right direction. I support you and everything you do.
Thank you.
Move us forward.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate that. You know, it comes down to being able to go home and feel like you're, you know, you're. Doing what, uh, what your conscience. And that's, you know, where I'm at. You're not always the most popular in these positions. But, uh, but at the same time, you know, it, it gets to the point where you have to. Open it up for discussion. I wanted to know if you all felt the same way. And so I appreciate it and I will entertain a motion. All right, all those in your favor. Thank you and have a good night, everyone. And thank you for our, for our paper and comments just kicking around. We appreciate it. Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.